Okay, it is 6:30 PM. I'm going to call the Select Board to order. And in a few minutes, we'll call some other committees to order. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. I think we need a roll call vote to see who's present.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Bates.
Present.
Mr. Dane.
Okay, he doesn't appear to be here yet, okay?
And Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present.
Okay. So, before we start this evening, we have a few brief announcements. First of all, we want to announce that Court Fest will be occurring this Saturday, September 25th, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, all over West Concord. It was a great event last time, so I encourage everyone to attend. And I have another brief announcement that Town Manager Stephen Crane would like to announce.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. Some of you may have received in the mail a notice from the town related to the hard-drive issue that we had a couple of years ago, that we treated as a data breach with reporting. We received notice late last week that those were going to be going out, and normally, we would put out news and notices, but figuring that we had a week or so to get that out before the notices hit people's doorsteps, because that was the pattern last time. Unfortunately, they got into people's mailbox as well ahead of when we expected it. To put in perspective, about 60,000 of those went out and were sent to people in all 50 states. So, it was a pretty, this was kind of the final, last batch of data from our forensic data mine that we've been doing, that has already taken the last, more than the last year and a half. So, if you have any questions, you can certainly call us, or call the 855 number that's listed. But the letter is legit, and we invite people to enroll for the credit monitoring that is included, that the town is providing as a result of this incident.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. And we will proceed now with the nominations.
Sure. Paul McCone of 33 Grove Street, Bruce Button of 28 Fairhaven Road, and Ann Rarich of 315 College Road to the Personnel Study Task Force for terms to expire May 31st, 2023.
Okay, any appointments?
Move to appoint Carolyn Bottom of 1603 Main Street to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane. Here, but he has the filter again. Ms. Escobedo. And myself, Mr. Johnson. Henry, you have the same problem you had last time when you joined the meeting. You may need to exit and re-enter.
Yes, I think that worked last time. Okay, the motion is approved unanimously, and at this point, we will have the School Committee called to order, and if there's a quorum for any other committee, possibly the Middle School Building Committee or the Finance Committee. So, let's start with the School Committee.
So, the School Committee will do a roll call. I think I see Alexa, Tracy, and myself on. So, Tracy Morano, present?
Yes, Tracy Morano, present.
Alexa Anderson, present.
And I didn't see Court a minute ago, so I'll just double-check. No. So, we have a quorum of three, and Cynthia Rainey, present.
Okay, thank you. Does the Middle School Building Committee wish to call to order? Do you have a quorum?
Hi, it's Dawn Gorielo. I'm actually, let me check. I see a few members.
Closed on by the time you put Jared Steven on it.
Okay, why don't I call our meeting to order? Sorry, I just rejoined, so give me a second, but I think, I think you just want me to call this order. Okay, so, I would like to call the Concord Middle School Building Committee meeting to order, and I will call roll. Stephen Crane?
Present.
Jared Sutton?
Present.
Matt Johnson?
Present.
Lori Hunter?
Present.
Justin Cameron?
Present.
John Harris?
Present.
Oh, hi, John. Russ Hughes. No, Russ.
He is logging in.
Oh, good for him. Okay, we'll call him present, then. Peter Frashalas?
Present.
Hey, Peter. Alexa Anderson?
Present.
Oh, we definitely have a quorum. Cor booth. Court?
He's not on.
Not today? Okay. Heather Baut?
Present.
Hi, Heather. Frank Cannon? No, Frank. Chris Popoff?
Present.
Thought I saw your name, Chris. Hi. Charlie Parker?
Present.
Hi, Charlie. Matt Root? No, Matt. Pat Nelson? Pat with us? I know she was saying I'm being here, but, and I'm Dawn Gorielo, present. Thank you.
Okay, that's quite a quorum. All right. And the Finance Committee, do you have a quorum?
Hi, Terry. I'm not sure that we do. So, I see Dee, and Mary, and myself, and John Hickling, so that would be four. I'm not sure I can see everybody, though. So, is anybody else in the Finance Committee on that I did not name? I don't think so. Okay, so that would be, is Dean on? Okay, so that would be five. Oh, Dee or Dean?
Dee. Dee is on.
Yeah, Dee is on. So, Dean, you're on, for some reason.
I am.
I don't see you. So, that would be five. So, we need...
Peggy's on.
Oh, Peggy's on, sorry, I didn't see, that's six? Anybody else? So, we don't yet have a quorum. Kathy Kuklow, I know, is on her way, so that would be seven, so that's half. So, it wouldn't be bad if we get one more person to do it. So, I'll do, I'll do a roll call vote, then. So, Chris Reynolds, I'm present. Mary Hartman?
Here.
Dee Ortner?
Present.
Dean Banfield?
Present.
Peggy Briggs?
Present.
John Hickling?
Present.
Did I get everybody? Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, this time, we would like to just be setting up the date for the special town meeting and the town election. And I understand the Building Committee is recommending January 20th for the special town meeting, and February 2nd for the town election. And I'd like to also recommend that we add a snow date to those dates in our motion, possibly the day after, if that works. And I understand that these dates have been voted by the Middle School Building Committee, and that was the Town Manager, the Moderator, the Town Clerk, and we're ready to go. So, are there any questions on these dates from Select Board members? Okay, Linda?
Well, you know, I think we did briefly discuss them at the last meeting, and knew that these dates were coming.
Right. I don't see any controversy. Kenny?
Yes. I think setting a date for the special town meeting is quite premature at this point. I think there's a lot more that we, as a board, need to know about what is going to be moved, and what the nature of the arrangement between the town and the School Committee is going to be with regard to many of the issues, including the cost, what is going to be asked for at the meeting, the commitment with regard to the disposition of the Peabody School, the issues with regard to other items that are going to affect the total cost and the financing, which is what our meeting about is tonight. And I think to start the meeting with setting a date for the special town meeting is not putting the cart before the horse, it's like putting the cart, the cart before the horse's parents, that we need to know a lot more about what the program is before we decide that we're going to schedule a special town meeting and a town election for the override, especially since I don't understand the urgency, since we won't even have the construction estimates for another, till what, another year from now? And I don't know what we're going to be voting on at a town meeting in January or February, if we don't know how much we're voting for, and what the cost is going to be.
Okay, so, someone might want to comment on that. I'll just say that I do know, Henry, there is a lot of preparation that needs to go on for a special town meeting at the Town Clerk's office, and other departments, the School Department, the Police Department, et cetera. So, we do need to set the date way ahead. We need to do a warrant, we need to do public hearing, so I do know definitely about those dates.
Well, but the question is, if we're not going to even be, we don't even know what the cost is going to be for another year, and we're not going to be spending any money for two or three years, I don't see what the urgency is about having a special town meeting in order to authorize the bonding and the funding of that, because unless somebody can tell me why we needed to do it in February, you know, I have to understand that before I think we...
Okay, so, Dawn, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Dane, the cost should be in in November of this year. So, the drawing, schematic design drawings will be complete next month, and there's a few weeks that the estimators need to estimate, and then reconcile independent estimators, and we'll have those costs in November, at which point, plenty of community outreach, and communication, and meeting with groups in towns, and answering community members' questions, we'll be outdoing all of that, and so that number will be known well in advance of the end of January, beginning of February.
Yeah, but I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, I think we ought to know what those numbers are, and what the, what the, I would like to see a memorandum of understanding between the Select Board and the School Committee about the whole process before we even go and schedule the special town meeting. And I know that if you are, we are thinking about a meeting in February or January, February, we need to start the scheduling now, but I don't even see why we need to have the meeting that early, indeed, why we can't even have it at the annual town meeting, when we know a great deal more about what the, what the costs are, and what the, and what the agreements are with regard to moderating those costs, which is what I thought the purpose of this meeting was, tonight.
Okay. I see that Matt is sharing the screen on the timeline. Dawn, or Matt, or whoever, would like to walk us through that a little bit?
I mean, up until now, we have funded the feasibility study in the schematic design, and those funds will be fully consumed by the time we get to this town meeting process. To proceed with the project beyond there, we need to fund the construction documents, you know, so the full construction design, as well as, of course, the construction phase, you know, authorize that construction phase. So, you know, we do have a compelling event here, where we will need the town to come together to be able to authorize this additional work.
Do we know what that work is going to cost, and whether or not, is that going to be bonded as well, or is that going to be an appropriation for the continuing design
I'm happy to answer that, Terry, if that's appropriate.
Okay, Dawn, great.
Sure. What we have right now, and if Stephen wants to chime in with additional details, he certainly can, since he signed the contract, we have a contract through the end of schematic design, which is the end of the current process that we're in, where I talked about the estimating being complete, leading up into town meeting, special town meeting, and the election. At that point, we can decide if we want to move forward with the current professionals, and it's an amendment to their contract, at which point, that's part of the bond that happens. There's no special appropriation typically made for those services. It's wrapped into the total project cost.
And then, to the second question, is that we have a project cost estimate, and we will be working off of those estimates. There's a design build, bid-build process that means that we are pushing out that date to receive those bids, with the idea that it'd make it a competitive process. If we had, you know, construction manager at risk, that phase would be pulled forward, we might be able to have some information sooner, but that, that's not the process that we're using for this project.
If I may tell you, what I would add is, even though, the process, when the town, via debt exclusion, approved 1.5 million, it was with the understanding that that, that those funds would be used to fund schematic design, which is what is happening, that we're really in the end of, and at the conclusion of schematic design, the project would be bought, would be brought back to voters at a special town meeting for consideration on moving forward. So, my, my understanding of the process is, is by setting the dates, we're following through on what the commitment was when, when the original appropriation and debt exclusion was made for the project.
Okay, thank you. Matt, can I ask you to stop screen sharing, so we can, I think, okay, great. Does anyone else have a question? Any other Select Board member have a question?
Yes, I, I do have a couple of questions. First is, do we need to set time definite, or just the date?
Stephen, what do you think?
I, I think we probably should set the time definite.
Okay, and so, we're assuming an indoor event, 7:00 PM?
So, I think the time definite can be set at whatever time town meetings, like, I am, town meetings typically start at. Yeah, I haven't experienced one of those here yet, but 7 o'clock is a typical time. In terms of indoor/outdoor, we have talked about logistics, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that needs to go into that. Indoor with masks, indoor socially distant, multiple locations, you know, we did the town caucus outdoors, this is a much bigger deal than that, but we, I think, in discussing this with the moderator, I think we anticipate a number of different formats, but the date and time can be the same regardless.
Okay, and then the next question is about the snow date, because January 20th is a Thursday, it's hard to imagine that we would do a special town meeting on a Friday night.
That's true.
So, it would seem that we would need to set the snow date for the subsequent week, perhaps, I don't know, on the Monday or the Tuesday.
If we do that, we may have to move the election date as well, and there also needs to be a snow date for the election, maybe. I mean, I think there should, in case we get a big...
Do we have snow dates for elections?
Well...
Not usually.
I don't think we'd use it if we had a two-inch storm, but if we had a 24-inch storm, we might need to use it.
Do you think that the snow dates could be set at a later time?
I guess so. I guess we're going to have to do more work to figure out the snow dates. We'll just, we'll vote them at a future meeting. Dawn, did you have another comment, or?
Just a question. That, that suggestion came from the town moderator at her request, so it's fine if it's set at another, from our perspective, and maybe we get her feedback on availability. So, that was definitely her feedback and request, so I sent that along to you.
Right, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions from the Select Board? Questions from the School Committee? Or from the Finance Committee, or, or the public? Is Jeremy here? I'm going to need Jeremy to help me with...
Yes, I am.
Okay, if you see any hands raised, please let me know. I don't see any yet.
There are none up as of right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Move to set the date of the special town meeting to January 20th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, to decide whether to authorize debt exclusion financing for the construction of a new middle school, and any other matters properly submitted to the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
No.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye. Okay.
We have four, four approved, and one, four ayes, one nay, and the motion carries. And the next motion?
Move to set the date for the special town election, February 2nd, 2022, to vote to authorize debt exclusion financing for the construction of a new middle school.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
No.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, the motion carries, four to one. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving along to the main part of the evening, which is to look at potential alternative revenues and offsets to this project. As we all know, this is a very expensive project, and the town is undertaking it without MSBA assistance. And as we just heard, voters will be going to the polls after the special town meeting, and voters will need a lot of financial information to decide how to vote. So, we have two polls, at least two polls tonight. One, to start to give the voter some financial information. We're going to use a lot of estimates tonight, these are not going to be real numbers, but it will start to give an idea. And two, we really want to identify as many revenue and cost offsets as we can, because we want to make this project as affordable as possible. The more affordable we can make it, the more people will feel comfortable voting for it, and the more likely it will have to pass. So, having said all that, though, we also want to be conscious not to raise expectations too high tonight. We don't want to make any false promises, we don't want to be unrealistic, and we understand, sorry about that, we understand the primary purpose of any school building is to educate the students. A school building is not a revenue generator. It might generate some revenue to offset its own costs. It's not here to make a profit or anything like that. So, to sum up, tonight's exercise, we'll attempt to find as much as realistically possible, we're attempting to substitute for the approximately 25% to 35% of funding that we might have received if we had gotten MSBA funding. Tonight's exercise is definitely not an opportunity to talk about the design of the school, or to expand the project beyond the $100 million current budget. So, just to give you an idea of how we're going to proceed, the first part will be brainstorming, and no ques, no idea is stupid in brainstorming, we're going to try and be very creative here. Then, we will call on our CFO, Carrie LaFleur, to explain the, quickly, the model that we're going to use tonight, and then we're going to use that model to examine each of the ideas that were brought forth in the brainstorming. And we're going to see if it's a realistic idea. Can we do it? Is it worth it? What else needs to be explored? What are the follow-up items? So, let's begin with the brainstorming. All ideas are welcome, so what we're going to do is, I'll call on first the Select Board, then the School Committee, then the Middle School Building Committee, then Finance Committee, and then the general public. And you can raise your real hand, or your virtual hand, and Jeremy will find everybody. So...
Carrie, I just have a question, Cynthia, on process?
Yes.
So, I expect there will be some great ideas that would need investigation?
Yes.
To understand what, if it's possible, how much, how are we going to sort of put those to the side, and try to arrange for that investigation to occur?
Right, exactly. Thank you, Cynthia. So, what we're going to do is, Matt has volunteered to type in all the ideas that we hear, that's part one. I'm just going to type the name of the idea. For example, I'll put out the first idea that we've already done, which is, we have a stabilization fund. So, one idea might be, can we add more to this stabilization? And so, we're going to collect all these ideas in part one. Then, in part two, we're going to go back and take a look at each idea. And for that, we have a model that Carrie will show us when we get to that part, and we'll see, how much might it save, how realistic is it, and who is going to be tasked with further follow-up? Does that, does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions about the process? All right. So, the first idea is stable sanction fund, and now I would, and the second idea, I guess, would be to put the bond out longer, possibly 30 years, because that's the longest by law, or maybe 25 years is good enough. So, I'm going to put those two ideas on the table, and ask my colleagues on the Select Board, Susan.
Ah, yes, thanks, Terry. And thanks to everybody who's joining tonight. It's important to have many voices in this conversation. The first thing that comes to mind, and I don't know the mechanics of this, but we've been hearing since the beginning of these conversations, that going from two buildings to one building is going to yield a half a million dollars a year in overheads, savings in overhead, because of, you don't need the duplication that is necessary for two buildings. So, I'm trying to figure out, and I think this is a CFO, Finance Committee, Select Board, School Committee conversation about, how is that, how might that be possible to have that amount? I know it would just go, you know, if it's not on the budget, goes back to the town, to the general fund, but is there a way to earmark it in any way?
Okay, thank you, Susan. So, Matt will just note that on the list, and when we get to that item, we will discuss if we can do it, how we can do it, et cetera, et cetera. And I will say also that one school committee cannot bind a future committee, and one town meeting cannot bind a future town meeting. But having said that, it's still a really great idea, and should be on the list for us to explore, and see if we can make it work. Who else on the Select Board has an idea? Henry?
Well, one that, one that's been mentioned frequently is the disposition of the Peabody property. But going back to just your last remark, when you say one school committee and one board of select, the one Select Board can't bind their successors, and that's the reason I think there should be a memorandum of, of understanding between the Select Board and the School Committee to deal with these issues, so that, in fact, we will be a different board in three years, and the School Committee will be a different... and the school committee will be a different board in three years. And they may have different priorities and the circumstances may be different. And yet the town will have voted the bonding, making certain assumptions about how, what the sources of the funding will be. And if we have not memorialized that in a memorandum of understanding, everything is up for grabs in terms of the political and financial currents of the moment. One of the things we've talked about from the beginning is the sale, is the declaring of the Peabody property surplus by the school committee, which I believe requires a formal vote of the school committee, and the sale of that property for commercial purposes, which could raise as much, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 million dollars of money that could be used to reduce or to pay down the bond. And if commercially developed for housing, might produce as much as $300,000 a year in tax revenues. And which is money that could be devoted to to paying the costs, the annual cost of the bond and therefore of the project, and therefore reduce the impact on the tax rate. So I think something that, that's something that needs to be on the list is the disposition of Peabody.
Right, so we will, we will add that to the list. And as far as suggestions, this is an excellent suggestion you have about doing a memorandum of understanding, but we're not going to talk about how to do these things yet. That's going to be in a few minutes when we get to that section. We're only going to list the items right now. Who else on the select board might have an idea? If not, we can go on and we can come back to the select board. How about the school committee? Do you want to propose some ideas?
So I'll go first, Cynthia Rainey. I have more questions, I guess. My big questions are solar and potential revenue there and potential reduction of the operations of the middle school, which would further result in further, would increase the 550 or so number, I would think. So I don't think we have that answer tonight.
Right. We don't have a lot of answers tonight. We're just making, tonight we're going to make lists. We're going to end up, at the end of this meeting, we're going to cross off some of the items because it's really unfeasible. Some we know we're doing, like stabilization fund. And many are going to be sent out for further exploration. And they'll be assigned a lead, like the town manager or the superintendent or the middle school building committee. Somebody will be in charge of doing the exploration and then we'll have to follow. So that's a good suggestion, Cynthia. Susan, you have another idea?
Yeah, actually Cynthia's suggestion made me think of it. I know that we currently don't have a sustainability director. However, I do remember early on in the first year of the meetings, there was a lot of talk about the potential of grant money for sustainable features or energy efficiency or various things of that nature. And I didn't know whose bucket that might fall into. But more importantly, is that going to be pursued?
Okay, good. Sustainability grants, great. I see Alexa has her hand up.
Hi, guys. My, I was sort of thinking about piggybacking on Henry's comment with respect to the sale of Peabody. I do think when you're looking for big impact, the sale of that property is likely the largest one that could be had. I think that's probably settled. But I think when you, or if you include that on the list, I do think I would encourage due diligence about what it could also be used for, should the town retain it. And even though it would, if we used it, not contribute to any offset, I wonder if there, you know, just are those uses that we haven't yet considered? And then finally, before I go, if we were to consider its sale, I would wonder too, if there is a chance to sort of carve off the field? Just because that's such a beloved piece of open space that is used for all kinds of recreation, structured and unstructured. Yeah, that's kind of it.
Okay, so the field of Peabody. Okay, thank you. And yes, we're going to have definitely a discussion tonight about, when we get to it, about the other possible uses of Peabody and the political ramifications and all of it. We're definitely going to be discussing that tonight. Not that we're going to solve it, but we'll start discussing. Okay, anyone else from the school committee? Court?
Yeah, I don't have a new suggestion to add at this point. I would certainly second Susan's. But just by way of clarification, at the present time, the project anticipates solar photovoltaic someday, but it's not in the design at the present time. So if we look for incentives, those incentives would not only help us toward any paybacks, offsets, recoveries, but would be money upfront to in fact make it possible.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if we have some suggestions from the middle school building committee.
Carrie, it's Lori.
Lori, hi.
I fall in a couple of these categories of committees. So I'm going to volunteer that we'll flesh out the fee question because it keeps coming up about the usage of the building, whether it be the auditorium or the gym. And we'll try to do some projections. It's nominal, but I think it's worth fleshing out so the community has the information.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering to do that, too. I think it's very important symbolically, too, that if a particular community group is adding to the building in terms of the size of the gymnasium or the auditorium or the parking or whatever, that we do explore use of fees and see how that is going to work. So thank you. Anybody else? Linda?
So this was not my item particularly, but it was in our packet. And so I just want to note that Henry Dane did suggest a difference in the tax rate be explored.
That's right. Henry, do you want to say anything briefly about that or wait until we talk about the details of this item?
Well, I think that's the other, I mean, there's two aspects of this. One is the cost aspect and the other is how we pay for it. And the problem with paying for it is the impact it has on the homeowners and the tax rate. And if, essentially, if we have a, the impact on taxes, it's been predicted for a $100 million building as $1,000 or more per year on a median valued home, that's a very serious impact on what we call moderate value or moderate value housing in this town. And if you care about diversity and if you care about affordable housing, to make the lowest cost housing more expensive is something that we would try to avoid. And I have proposed that there are, there is a method to do that under the statute that provides for the residential exemption. But I think that only comes after we've made every effort to reduce the cost. I really hear very little about reducing the cost because I think that's the first step. You reduce the cost and then you find ways to pay for it. And then you find, when you're done with all that, how you, how you control the impact on the tax rate and the cost to people who are already struggling to continue to live in this town.
Okay, thank you. So that will go on the list. And I'm glad you brought that up. I neglected to really thank the middle school building committee on behalf of the entire town and for all the tremendous amount of hard work that you folks are doing. And one of your jobs is to create the best building at the lowest cost and to get the best design. So thank you for all your work on that. And Henry's correct. First, the middle school building committee is going to do all of that work. Then we're going to see how many of these offsets we can realistically apply to get the cost down on the debt service. So let's see. Does the finance committee have some suggestions? Chris?
Hi. Yeah, so I had a couple of ideas and they, I agree with the ones that are already on the list, but so I'm getting into a little bit more extreme items. So here's some real brainstorming. So naming rights. So do we have the ability to sell the naming rights on the building or the sports fields? And is that a way to generate, you know, private donations to this project? So that's one that I thought on my list. The other thing is the ability to direct CPC funds for open space to this project. So to offset on an annual basis, some amount of the CPC funding into this, into this project. Those are my, I think those are my two ideas. And in general, getting back to your stabilization idea, Terry, it's a reduction in other areas of town spending, right? So if we're, if we cannot come up with ways to reduce the cost on this project, but we want to keep the taxes level or more level or less of an increase, then are there other areas, and I'm always thinking about capital spending, where we can tighten our belts for some period of time so that we can offset the impact of the growth in taxes related to the middle school? That's what I had.
Okay, good. That's, that's the kind of thing we want to do in brainstorming. No idea is stupid idea and, and you know, let's explore some of those. Really need to get out of the box. So that's great. Who else do we have? John?
Hi, yes, thank you. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I guess my first question is, are we the first town to brainstorm over possible revenue offsets? And is there not a way for us to somehow research the, you know, what other efforts, other smart, well-managed towns in the Commonwealth have, have used to try to create the same kind of, you know, the same kind of effect? Are we, are we plowing completely new ground here? Or are there some towns who's, you know, who we can follow? And I don't, I don't know of any myself, but presumably we could, we could do some work on that. And if I may, just another quick comment about some of the, or at least one of the other ideas mentioned. Mr. Dane's and I believe Alexis's, you know, point on the sale of Peabody. I view Peabody as a spectrum of possibilities. The sale and the development, you know, is arguably one extreme. I think there are many possibilities that could possibly come out of that, including satisfying other town goals, you know, such as in some form, you know, affordable housing, you know, whatever, you know, the committees and the voters, you know, all, you know, all decide is appropriate for the town. So I would say rather than that being just one idea, it really should be a spectrum of ideas, you know, with many other possibilities. And lastly, really just in the form of a question, if the $500,000 cost saving to operating, to operating, you know, one middle school as opposed to two is an actual cost saving, you know, to the schools, I guess my question is, should that not come out of the school operating budget rather than some other general fund or some of the other sources that were identified? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Peggy and then Eric.
Okay, I have three really great ideas. One, we should not sell the land. That's a capital offset, not an operating offset. And we never ever can buy it back.
I'm sorry, Peggy, you're breaking up a little bit. Can you say? I forgot most of it.
Well, let me put it this way. The previous speaker said everything I wanted to say. So first, we always are trying to buy land. We should never sell it. And I was going to attribute it also to Susan. We should take that $500,000 savings and roll that into the, you know, mortgage payment or whatever you want to call it. And the previous speaker said everything I wanted to say. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
Yes, one idea, and that is to examine whether we can use any of the pandemic recovery dollars that are coming our way through the federal, through the federal government by way of the state for this project. I know there's a number of eligibility, prescribed eligibility uses for those dollars may be worth looking at.
Great. Okay. Are there other people who have their hands up? I don't see anybody else. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that in addition to the just pandemic funds there, we, we might get future infrastructure project funding for which a school might qualify if there's an infrastructure bill that actually passes at the federal level.
Okay, good. So we can have two categories. All right. And anybody else, general public who's here who might have an idea? Please raise your hand.
Todd Benjamin has his hand raised?
Yes, Todd Benjamin.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad that we're having this, this conversation. In the spirit of brainstorming, a few ideas came to mind, some that have been mentioned. But before I share those ideas, I think that we really need to focus on how to avoid continuously putting more burden on the taxpayers. This is a significant expense and this isn't the only expense that the town will be looking at in the not-too-distant future. There's been, there's been very serious talk for several years about a public safety building. And that will, that will cost, I would expect, at least $30 million. There's been talk of other expensive capital, capital projects. And we need to have that in mind as we talk about this project as well. So in that light, I wonder how we can look at grants and donations? Is it possible, for example, to have CDBG funds, the Community Development Block Grant Funds, to help in any of the infrastructure that is going into this building? As somebody else mentioned, advertising or naming rights, is that something that is possible? Also, I think that the, that the issue of what expenses in the town can be cut to help fund this is something that we really do need to look at. Again, we, we can't continuously look at spending, spending, spending. So I think also we have to severely discount the notion that we can easily and quickly sell the Peabody land. I think we really need to be honest with ourselves and say that the Peabody land will probably, any sale of that will meet significant resistance from the, from the neighborhood. I think that that redevelopment of that land would probably take in an exorbitant amount of time to actually, to actually be realized. And therefore, any proceeds from that would, would likewise take an exorbitant amount of time to be realized. So I think that we really need to look at donations. This is a school. It's not a community building, but it seems like we're going down that path of melding the two. And while we're all in favor, I'm sure, of being efficient and having multiple uses for our town buildings, I think we need to stay on the focus of this is an academic building. It's not something, we're not part of a university. It's not something we're not part of a university. We don't need to have these luxurious amenities. This isn't a country club. This is a a middle school. Its primary focus should be on educating the students. And and I'm saying this, by the way, um, many of you know me, but for those of you who don't, I have three kids. Uh, my son is currently in the middle school, so he won't benefit from this. But my other two children who are younger very well could benefit from this, depending on when it's constructed. And I would love to see a a beautiful new building. But we also need to be cognizant of the, of the tremendous burden that we're placing in our community. And especially on those who are on fixed incomes. And I think we also have to look at it. Are we moving to a, towards being a community where people will only move here for the schools and when their children are done with the schools, well, we'll move out. Are we, are we moving toward? I think we're building ourselves up to be a transient kind of community. And this will will unfortunately really have a negative impact on the character of what Concord has has been. And what we would hope it to be in the future. So I really urge us to um, to look at how we can fund this. Actually, to be honest with you, I don't think we should be funding it to begin with. I think that the gym should stay the way it is and and that the auditorium should stay the way it is. And for those folks who feel differently, then those should be the folks who who are tasked with the with the duty of finding the funding for that. And if they can find the funds for that, then go ahead and build it. But uh, but I think that spending this amount of time for everybody here who's, what, 50 participants here to figure this out, um, i- it's not a real good use of time. I think the people who who really want to enlarge and enlarge the um, the facility, those should be the people who figure out how to fund it. And it shouldn't be on the taxpayers.
Thank you, Todd. Uh, next we have Stefan and then Dee.
Thank you. Um, Stefan Bader, Seven River Street, um, getting ready for town meeting. There's, there've been a couple of mentions of selling the property and I have a real problem with that. I think we should hold on to it. I don't think we should sell it. I think how we use it as a town could be investigated. The, in terms of affordable housing, I can see a range of uses going from the town retaining the land for affordable housing and building nothing but affordable housing on it to possibly building um, housing that includes affordable units and market rate units.
Right, um, Stefan, we're going to have an entire conversation about that in a few minutes.
Okay.
Right now, do you have any other suggestions? I I will call on you when we get to the Peabody item, um, because you're making some very good points. But do you have any other suggestions for the brainstorming part?
I I guess just to explore a range of housing uh, possibilities, some of which could generate taxable income to real estate.
All right, thank you. Gee Ortner, do you still have your hand up?
I put my hand down. Thank you for remembering me. I put my hand down because I understand that my comments will be more appropriate under Part B of this discussion.
Okay, thank you. All right, who else um, has not been heard that has a brainstorming idea?
I see Sandy, if you uh, have an input.
Okay.
Thank you.
Please introduce your name and address.
Thank you. It's Sandy Smith, 25 Academy Lane. Um, my comments uh, uh, will expand on a couple of ideas that have already been expressed. I think it was Chris Reynolds who suggested that CPC funds be used under the open space category that um, CPC funds are dedicated to, but it seems to me they could also be used under the recreation category as well as I think CPC funds were used for a portion of the cost of the high school fields. So there's plenty, plenty of history there. The other, um, the thought also would be that if we, um, since CPC funds are an ongoing funding source, uh, they could be used to pay debt service and uh, that would allow a much larger allow them to finance a much larger portion than if it were just a one-time upfront annual grant. Secondly, uh, I was interested that one of the early suggestions was to lengthen the the debt for this middle school project. I've been an advocate for a number of years that the town consider an alternative debt service structure for its schools. Concord has a a history of financing its school debt using what what I call a level principal payment uh, process.
Right, Sandy, if I could just interrupt you, um, we are going to exactly go over that point in the model that um, our CFO is going to show us um, in about five minutes. So, thank you for bringing that up, but yes, we are definitely going to be talking about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is uh, Dean Banfield?
Hi, thanks. Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace, member of the Finance Committee. Uh, there have been two items that have been discussed that I'd like to have us explore the nuance of, one of which was the $500,000 a year operational savings and how could that, you know, uh, get to our, get to our debt service? How could we make that help our debt service? And the other was the schools potentially, um, you know, exploring their fee structure to make sure that their, their fee structure is is helping in some way. And so the question I'd like to have us look at from a nuanced perspective is what kind of financial arrangement could occur between the school budgeting process and our town general fund and our, you know, our debt service payments such that these kinds of things could actually occur? I I, it it's not obvious to me how that can happen. So if we can get a little detail on on what might, what arrangements could be made on either of those fronts, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Okay, we're definitely going to have to talk about that, yes. Okay, um, at this time, what I'd like to have Matt screen share the list that we've accumulated so far. And then let's see if we have anything additional that we want to add. Okay, so we have 16 ideas. Good job. Wow. So everybody take a moment to look this over and see if we have any other suggestions. Then we're going to go through them one by one.
I guess the first question is whether they were accurately or completely captured. And if anybody feels that it wasn't, perhaps we should get that sorted out first.
Right. So, if anybody feels that there's something that you um, brought forth an idea and it is not captured accurately here, please raise your real hand or virtual hand. And Jeremy, do you?
Get them all on the screen at the same time.
Yeah. Also, if anybody has another idea that is not on this list, please raise your hand. Jeremy, do you see anyone?
Uh, there was no one with their, their hand raised this time, no.
Okay, that means Matt did a wonderful job capturing everything. So as we go through each one, we're going to refine them anyway. So at this time, what we'd like to do now is turn it over for a few minutes to CFO Carrie LaFleur, who is going to show a model that she's been working on. And then we will take each one of those 16 ideas and um, see what the model is, what we can do in the model and politically and realistically, whether it's feasible and worth doing. So um, Carrie, I saw you earlier. You are with us.
I am here with you. Did you want me to share my screen now?
Yes, if I'm to model and share the screen, that would be great.
Okay, so I took notes and um, the way that I documented these is slightly different than Matt's. So if Matt wants to send the list over, I I can update that. But for, for now, I'm going to go through this model. Is it large enough for everybody to see? Or I'm going to assume that it's large enough for everybody to see.
A bit small, Carrie. Can you, can you make it a bit larger?
Well, that's good.
That's better.
All right. Okay, so before I get started, I did want to make a couple of introductions. I I wanted to let you know that both Peter Frazier and Lisa Driscoll, the town's financial advisors from Hilltop Securities, are also attending the meeting this evening and they are here to answer any questions that may come up. After several meetings with both Terry Ackerman and Matt Johnson, we were able to come to a tool that we're presenting to you this evening to estimate the impact of any proposed alternative funding sources for the middle school building project. The base assumption that we're using here is up here at the top. And this is the base assumption that was used in the middle school question and answer document that was prepared in May. And that is a 20-year amortization on the um, construction using the level debt model. So not equal, not equal principal or level principal that we have used in the past, but level debt so that the payments on an annual basis are very similar from year to year. And we're using a 4% interest rate. That impact is shown over here at median assessed value of $1,024.03 per year. And again, this is the same information that was included in the Q and A document from May. Now, you might say that the 4% interest rate is too high of an assumption. And I would say absent an actual construction or even an estimated construction timetable, this is the standard that we would use. And as we get closer to financing this project, we can update the interest assumptions. There are several alternative financing assumptions shown along with their effect on the estimated impact at median value. And just by way of example, if we go down here to the first one, this alternative assumption is a 20-year amortization, also used in level debt, but a 3% interest rate assumption. That would save $640,000 per year. And that would result in a reduction to the average cost of $89.05 per year. And so we have a couple of different, we have a 25-year and a 30-year. We're showing all level debt repayment plans. Because it it's very difficult to show equal principal where the annual debt service payments are higher and they taper off because there's such a fluctuation in the impact, the annual impact. So we're just showing all level debt here. And then in the section below is where we capture.
Carrie, can I interrupt? For, uh, someone had a question. Um, I believe it was Sandy. I didn't get his last name. In the previous debt issuances, did we use level debt or was it level principal? Or is this, it's just different from what we've done in the past?
Sandy Smith.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, it it is different. All the school building projects that the town has financed have been 20 years at level principal or equal principal. And so the, the, the debt service payments are higher at the front end and they taper off. The high school project is financed on a 25-year um, schedule. We had, there were some initial discussions early on because of the, the high cost. The $100 million is far in excess of anything that the town has paid in the past, even the Willard School where there was no MSBA participation. So we modeled everything on level debt. So this, this is different than what we have done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, so is level debt, is that like a home mortgage?
Yes.
Same, okay, thank you.
Concept of the mortgage.
Yeah, same, same monthly payment and it amortizes down over time?
That's correct. So we've captured some of the items that have been offered up as potential cost savings in this section down below. And once we start talking about estimated dollar savings per year, to the extent that that's possible, we can model out the estimated savings for those different initiatives. And then the last section here over on the right-hand side, we can pick different assumptions, combine different assumptions to get a total estimated savings if there's interest in doing it. So that in essence is the model that we have available this evening.
Great. And if you can go to the bottom, um, at the bottom, we might have a net. You want to, so our goal is right now, if we don't get any of these things, the cost is for the median house, $1,024.03 per year. Our goal tonight is to get that number down um, in a realistic way, but a significant way. Okay, so let's start at the beginning of the well, let's start with these financing assumptions. It does seem to me that we're wanting to be able to save money right off the bat by, um, you know, um, I'm not sure if we should do 30 years. That's the maximum by law. But 25 years might be worth doing and we might get lucky and get a 3% or lower interest, but we don't know that yet. So there's going to be a lot of unknowns with all of these. So I think my suggestion for the financing assumptions, at least for right this minute, is we might want to go with number two, which we did with the high school and go with the level debt, but the conservative 4% coupon rate. And for the whole owner, I think this is a technical, um, it's not a political issue. It's a technical issue that Carrie and her team would be working on. Is there anybody on the select board that wants to do something differently with the financing assumptions?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would like to correct the statement that this would save money. I don't think it would save money. In fact, the total financing cost would be higher in all of these scenarios. It, what it does is it spreads the cost over a longer period of time. I think that it's kind of unfortunate if we do this because we have future other building projects that we need to take care of. And I think that as the past financing of the, of past projects comes off the books, you know, we need to be able to fund new projects and not have our funds already tied up for very many years um, in these additional projects. So, you know, it's just kicking the can down the road. I I do, I am concerned about making those changes and and then having to defer any other future capital projects.
That's a good point. Um.
I don't understand, I don't understand what the estimated annual savings are against. What are we saving from? I mean, these.
Saving from um, the cost per year right now in the, in the gray row there. It's $1,024 for the median house.
But.
Per year. We're trying to, we're trying to get that number down.
But there's no, but there's no estimate we've heard that had any number nearly as low as a tax impact of $144 a year.
No, that's the saving. So the total.
Saving, savings over what?
Four.
The $10.24.
Yeah.
Right. So, Carrie, Carrie would probably explain it, but it's 1,024 minus 144.
Out of the tax, the tax is like 875, something like that.
So that's not really savings, it just means that that's a way of nowhere, nowhere that it says that the, the, the cost on the median house is going to be about a thousand dollars a year. And maybe you can save a few dollars one way or the other by fiddling with the financing terms.
Correct.
What it's saying is that it would say you would pay 870 per year, but you'd have to pay it for 25 years instead of 20 years. So Matt is correct, we, we, that's, that's a balancing act we're going to have to figure out.
Yep.
Um, let's go back to the next one and I think, you know, we'll come clear how this is going to work. So, um, what is the current balance in stabilization fund right now?
It's two, two million.
Two million. So let's put that in for column A because we haven't increased it yet, let's.
Column, column G, column E.
Column, column E, I'm sorry, A, column G. Yeah, right there.
Right there.
But let's put that 2 million in.
And that's 2 million in which stabilization fund the school?
It's the middle school stabilization.
Yeah, okay.
Now, um, Carrie, can you explain why this is saving so much per year? The model I looked at before was a lot lower than this. Um, is this, oh, this is 2 million per year that we have in there, that's the problem.
Right, so.
That's the problem, okay. So let's say we do it over five years, for example, so.
But you just have to subtract the 2 million off the 100 million.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't set the model up that way. So, so this is estimated annual savings. If we have 2 million in that stabilization fund and we allocate it over five years, it's 400,000 per year and that will save $55 per year for the median house.
So, I'm sorry, do we just make an asterisk? That what if we take our 100 million and make it 2 million less? And see what that does, just an asterisk for some other time? Because I would, I would just take that 2 million and use it.
I understand what you're saying, is, is this Peggy talking? I don't know how she.
Yes, it is.
Um, we, you're right, but we didn't set the model up that way.
Well, I know you didn't set it up that way, that's why I'm just saying make an asterisk and look at it some other day.
But isn't the stabilization fund, doesn't that come from tax revenues?
Yes, but that money has already been charged to the taxpayers on previous bills, if I understand correctly, and it is now in the bank.
But we, but we keep on using it because we, our policy is to maintain that fund at a certain level and we then.
Oh, no.
You're mixing it up, Henry, it's not free cash.
Oh, sorry.
This is a special stabilization fund just for the middle school.
It's not free cash, it's totally different.
So what I'd like, what I'd like to do with this is, I'd like under the WHO owner, I'd like to ask the finance committee, if you would take a look at putting some more money in. So we have 2 million now, can we put a little more in in the next year or two? Um, so let's say if we, under WHO owner, if we put finance in there and timeframe on, you know, by, by this town meeting, can you, can you, can you let us know what you think? That's down to you, Chris.
Yep, that sounds fine. I mean, the, the issue is, you know, is whether, whether the town generates the funds to support it, right? So it's a derivative calculation. We can't put the money aside if we don't have it, so.
That's right, um, okay.
We can look at it.
Type in, um, January special town meeting. Um, do you think you'd be ready, finished exploring by then to know?
But we'll have the, but, I mean, we, we would have, we would have our budget discussion. I mean, how far out do you want to talk about it, right? So we have 2 million in there that we put in, I think, two years ago. So we certainly could talk about FY '23 by the end of this year, which is when we're, those are the budget things that we're talking about. We couldn't talk about '24 or '25, but we can talk about '23, Terry.
Okay, super. I see there's a question from Lois Suarez. Lois, you're on mute.
Wait a minute, I got it.
Yeah, you are.
Lois Suarez, Suarez, 34 Everett Street. What is the value that you're using for the median in, um, home?
Carrie, can you answer that?
So the median, the value of the median home is $928,100.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to B, capture cost efficiencies. So I think this is the item where, um, you have some efficiencies because we're going to have one middle school instead of two. And I think that has to do with staff and utilities. And I believe the number that was given previously was 548,000 per year, and I don't know that is a correct number or not. Lori or India, do you wish to amend that number with a better update?
That's our best number as of right now, we believe we can reach that. And we, we'd say you should still use it. You're right, combination of staffing and, and utilities.
But it does not include what would happen if we have solar.
It does not. No.
So that's a little bit outside the school committee's.
All right, is that, is that another item on here later?
Well, it, it's directly tied to, yeah, I mean.
Okay, okay, so let's just deal with this item first. So if, um, to Dean's point, you figure out a mechanism, well, first of all, if the school committee likes this idea and, um, like I said, you can't bind a future school committee, but, uh, possibly we could do a memorandum of agreement or something.
So we're, we're a town department and I think we're going to have to have further discussions with council and with Carrie. Because I don't believe there's any way for us to have a memorandum of understanding saying that we're going to hand over from one department to another monies.
Right, I, I, the way I kind of imagine this might work involves the finance committee.
Exactly, exactly. Can I say, can I say something?
Uh, yes, one second, Mary, let's see if we're on the same page. I'm thinking about the guidelines process.
Exactly.
Okay, well then, take it away, Mary.
I think it's simple, I, I don't think it would be formal. I, I agree with everyone that we can't bind future town meetings, but we can have a, an agreement that we honor that says that once the middle schools are consolidated, the guideline spending for the next year will be reduced by a certain amount of money for the schools. And that will free up, Carrie will have that much more money to allocate to debt service. So I don't think it has to be complicated, I really, I don't. Carrie, you can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but it's simply, as long as the finance committee remembers and the school committee remembers, we reduce guideline spending by that amount and Carrie can simply put that, redirect that money. Carrie, is, have I oversimplified it?
No, I, I don't think so. I think that was a, a great explanation of, um, exactly what I was thinking as well.
Thank you.
So was I, and hopefully that answers Dean's question about how we would, um, realistically figure out how to do this. But I think that, um, there is a possibility, you know, in five years, 10 years or whatever, that a school committee could say, well, we don't agree with that this year, we have special circumstances or whatever. So.
Yep.
We can start that process and it may continue for the entire 25 years. But we can't, you know, it's not an absolute legal, um, you know, constraint.
It will get fuzzy, it will get fuzzy as time goes on because there will be other changes in the budget and it will be hard to figure out exactly where those changes come from and whether they're coming out of that $500,000 or whether they're coming out because of higher labor costs or higher energy costs. And so it's going to be tough to carry it far, very far into the future.
But we don't have to figure anything out, we can just, uh, finance committee move, um, guidelines move 548,000 each year from one.
I just want to, I don't think we have that final number yet because we don't understand how we're going to necessarily have to pay for heating and cooling the building, which would be significant savings.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, but that's been the presentation, so we might as well use it.
Right, I just, I'd like to asterisk, I really want us to be very aggressive in investigating what is going on with the solar. That's all I'm saying.
Oops, went into that model. Yes, we're going to definitely talk about the solar in a minute. Um, we lose, we lost screen share, I think. Good. There we go. Okay. So for WHO and timeframe, do we want, um, Mia and Chris and Carrie, do you want to get together and? Or, or maybe it's not, um, Chris, it's, um, Parrishar. But it seems like somebody on finance, somebody on school, Carrie should get it together and see how to put the detail of this together. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's, we just, yes, I, I think we just went through it. Just the tricky part is going to be the school committee three years from now to agree.
Okay. Let's move on then to the sale of Peabody. Now, we had a lot of comment on this before and I think that, um, Carrie has an estimate she's going to put in, but it's just a ballpark estimate and the real questions here are political. Um, and we're not going to solve it tonight. But how realistic is it? I mean, there's so many shades to it. There's the field only, what about affordable housing, what about the neighbors? There's a lot to explore with this. So I think that what we really need here is all of this is WHO owner and timeframe, me to maybe task somebody with starting to take a look at this. Um, Carrie, what do you have for your ballpark estimate for the Peabody? If we were to sell the entire land, I guess.
The ballpark estimate that we're using was 5 million dollars. The, the assessed, the current assessed value for the property is just north of 12 million dollars. But the, you know, the, the value has everything to do with the intended use of the property. So it's 12 million dollars as a school.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry.
Uh, yes, who, I'm not sure who that is, I can't quite see.
It's Peggy.
Peggy, yes.
Carrie, does the 5 million assessment include the demolition of the current school? The cost of demolishing Peabody?
No, you don't, not necessarily, the, the, the 5 million was just, we were just using it for modeling purposes, we don't really have any data to back up the, um, that that's a real cost or, or value of the property.
Okay, gotcha.
So let's just put that in for the model just to see. If we were to sell it and realize 5 million and if we were to use that over five years, I guess that would be 1 million per year. Uh, let's just put that in just to see what we get. So it's pretty good savings. Uh, we might instead decide to put it over 10 years. We might instead decide not sell it at all and use it for affordable housing. Um, there's many, many variations. Um, we should skip down also to F, E field. And I know somebody suggested this, but I don't remember what the exact suggestion was on, on the P field.
Not to sell it.
Not to sell the field, but to sell the rest of the land?
Well, if you had to sell the rest of the land, to just think about trying to preserve the field.
Okay.
That's not going to help with any cost savings.
Okay.
That's the, that's the problem we face is that there's going to be a lot of resistance, even if it makes financial sense. And even worth a lot more than 5 million dollars commercially, there's going to be a lot of resistance to not use it for other municipal purposes, which is a totally legitimate thing. But then you can't really tell people when they're voting for the bond issue that this money, this, the money from the sale of Peabody is going to be available to reduce the cost of the financing. So if we're going to use that as something that we, essentially to sell the project, we would have to have a really clear commitment to the fact that it would be used commercially. Otherwise, it's up for grabs.
Right, and I don't think we're going to have that clear commitment by January. But I think that we should begin the discussion. I think we have to talk to the neighbors, to the affordable housing groups, to the other capital projects that we want to build in town and, and, and every other stakeholder involved in this.
Right, and if that's where we're going, I think it's all over, you just write it off because it's, it's not going to happen.
I, I agree.
It won't be done by January, that's for sure.
And it won't happen, period.
Well, it may.
It was originally, I think, my idea that we do it. But I see that it really requires a, a real determination that we're going to, you know, kind of plug through this in order to do what we have to do to reduce the, 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 the debt load of building the school. But I think we have to assume that's just not going, it's not going to go that way.
Right, or it may go partially that way, but we, so we're not going to have any definite answers in January. But what I'd like to do is have some kind of plan for somebody to explore this and see what ideas may come out of it. And, um, well, it seems to me that the town manager is in the position to best be able to work with the, um, different stakeholders on this.
It, it, can I, um, jump in on that, Terry then?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I think, I, I, I don't want to hold out false hope that somewhere between now and January we'll have a meaningful, um, answer. And I, I don't, I, I think this is too important of an issue to, um, try and paper mache something together to fill in a blank that really won't be meaningful. I mean, when you looked at the timeline at the very beginning, it's going to be a school into, I think, 2025? Uh, or 2024, 2025, it's going to be a school, there'll be children there every single day. And then.
Right.
Yeah, and then you have demolition and site planning and everything else, so, um, people today may feel one way about it, but people may feel entirely differently about it when it actually comes time to happen. And I like the way John Hicklin talked about. And I like the way John Hickling talked about, uh, spectrum of options, uh, which includes keep it as playing fields, town owned, all the way to develop it commercially, but I just, I, I, I very much appreciate the sentiment of wanting to, because it is an asset, uh, and wanting to know what we can, how we can use this asset to minimize the impact of the overall project. I just wish I could see a way to do it in a, in a bona fide way. But it doesn't mean we're not gonna work on it. I mean, as, as, as the middle school project itself, hopefully, if it's approved by voters, it, as it evolves, we'll, we will certainly have that, that dialogue, um, and build that to that point, but, um, in terms of when people are gonna have to actually vote on the middle school fu- funding, I'm not sure that we have something that people could hang their hat on.
Correct. Um, so the timeframe is, is gonna be a long timeframe. Um, so I see several people have their hands up. We'll start with Dean and then Frank, and then Peggy.
Uh, given the long timeframes that we're talking about, uh, to get to moni-, even if we're partially monetizing or getting a revenue stream out of it, maybe we build affordable housing and we take the rental stream, whatever it might be. I, there, there's a spectrum of options. Uh, what if we were to put it in our back pocket and say, this asset could underwrite a future capital need of the town and, and just take it off the table as something that we're using as a way of considering it in the, in the context of this school debt issuance, because it's not even gonna be, you can't apply anything to the debt service until four or five years out easy. So, you know, four or five years from now, we may be saying, oh, we need a public ser-, you know, safety building, or we need X, Y, or Z, and at that point, we might use it to underwrite that project. That's just a thought, is that maybe you just take it off the table, given the complexities here.
Okay, that's one idea. Um, another idea is we might, is some of these things were used in years, right, of your project, maybe Peabody will be in years six through ten or in years even twenty through twenty five. We, we don't know, but yeah, it's a long term thing. Uh, Frank, and then Peggy.
Yes, um, as an affordable housing act, I don't think we have to take money entirely off the table, but clearly, we can't plan on it by January. But I'd like the town to look at the idea of selling this, uh, for housing that might be smaller than what developers would use if they had to maximize the value from the land and include affordable units, but that doesn't mean that the town can't ultimately realize something from housing on this site, so uh, I just want us to take that into account, but perhaps discount the value by what it would take to get smaller, more affordable units there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peggy?
Yes, uh, I, I, very, very respectful about, uh, both what Steve Crane and Dean Banfield said, and also Frank, I think that is more political than financial. There are every, well, every time we see a parcel of land, we wanna buy it, so I just, while there is a lot of interest in thinking, oh, we could save money by selling it, I think, I agree, we should take that off the table, and we need to have a very, a good explanation why, because people will continue to ask that question, and I think the answer is, uh, there are so many competing uses in the long-term master plan. Uh, we're not gonna sell it, we're gonna think about it, blah, 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 but it, it just adds a huge layer of complexity when you start thinking about selling it, or what, or what to do with it at all.
Okay, I wanna make a comment, and then we'll call on Stefan. Um, I wanna draw everyone's attention to column L, which is a scenario column. And just like Carrie is doing there, she's putting in, um, three, just, it is a scenario A, and she's putting in, um, one of the debt service options and, um, the stabilization fund and the, um, cost efficiencies, but she's not putting in the Peabody school. So that, that is what we're doing here tonight. We're, we're building scenarios. And the total savings is two hundred and twenty dollars estimated for the median house getting the cost down to eight hundred and three. So we still have to go through the rest of this list, but I just wanted to show how this scenario building is going to work. So in this scenario, we're hearing a lot of people say, don't put the Peabody school in yet. It's, you know, very long term, we don't know, and so that's what this scenario is doing. Okay, uh, Stefan?
Um, I was gonna suggest that, uh, the, you could include seventy thousand dollars a year as the real estate tax stream, if it's, if it's valued at five million dollars and fourteen dollars per thousand, that generates seventy thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. Um, some use, whatever use it gets put to, it, that property, I believe, has the potential to generate something like that order of magnitude of tax revenue to the town. And I think saying something like that is better than just saying a million maybe. Um, because you're all, th- these million dollar numbers are only for the first five years, uh, or three years, or however fast you're spinning it down. But whatever gets built there, or however that property ends up being used, it's going to generate some sort of income for the town for the next thirty years.
Well, um, I, I wanna, um, push back on that a little because if we don't sell it at all and we keep all of it as open space, or I think if, um, it's affordable housing, in some cases, we do not get that same, uh, tax revenue.
Uh.
Really depends.
It depends, yeah, there's, there's some, some of the affordable housing does pay payments in lieu of taxes.
Right, right, and open space will not pay anything, so.
Open space won't, that's true.
Hard to say. Uh, but good idea. It's not going to be zero. It's just that we don't know yet. It's a long term thing, and we just, uh, probably can't plan on it right now because we don't know.
Thank you.
Um, hey, all right, let's, um, move on to the solar.
Could I, could I make a comment?
Uh, yes, Dean.
Uh, just on the scenarios that you're, that you're building, um, I think we have some numbers that might be apples and oranges. Um, you know, if we choose a specific debt service number, that's gonna go on for thirty years. If we say we're gonna get five hundred and forty eight thousand dollars in operational savings from the schools, that's gonna go on for thirty years. But to say we're gonna apply two million dollars from the, uh, stabilization fund at four hundred thousand dollars, that's only gonna go on for five years, and then those fifty five are gonna jump right back into the tax bill. So we have to be careful about building the scenarios here and make sure that we're talking about the apples and oranges. Uh, Stefan, I think, touched.
That's one limitation tonight. There are a lot of details that we are not doing properly, that being one of them. Thank you.
No problem, okay.
Hi, this is Carrie. Could I make a comment on that?
Sure.
But just a, just a note for, for the audience, that the existing elementary school debt will be phasing off over the next several years and, and fully, fully phased out by twenty twenty nine. And so while some of these items, i- if they're used in this way, will only be available for the next five years. I think we also need to take into account the phasing out of that, the final amounts of the elementary school debt, so so the overall exempt debt that's added to, to the tax bill is, um, you know, will be tapered by that.
If you did that, then you called the mouth. Just so, I think people have seen this before, the tapering. I'm not sure it's coming up.
Oh, did you want me to show that I?
Yeah, yeah.
The mountain, the mountain.
There we go. Okay, if you could just briefly review what this is all about, just very briefly, I think we basically know.
Sure, so, so this is a graph that shows all of the existing exempt debt and the impact at, to the median tax bill. The blue here is the town's exempt, so this is for the middle school, the middle school projects. The green is for the Minuteman High School. The orange is for CCRSD. So you can see in, in the current year, the, um, the total exempt debt is just under seven million dollars, taping off quite significantly. Um, actually, it's, it's fiscal thirty that the elementary school debt is fully satisfied. Uh, but, but a big drop in debt service associated with school projects over the next several years, and then this lineup here represents the, um, the tax impact or the amount added to the tax bill. And if you can see this over here, so currently, in, in the current fiscal year, the median tax bill has an additional nine hundred fifty six dollars tacked on to it for, to pay for exempt debt projects, and then going down significantly, uh, over time.
Okay, so I think this, this is important, um, the median tax bill will go down from nine fifty five down to about a little under four hundred. And.
Oh, no. That's not the, that's the impact, not the tax bill.
Right, the decrease will be, uh, more than five hundred dollars in, in that period of time.
Right.
Right, so I think that is why Carrie is concentrating some of the items like stabilization fund in the first five years, from FY twenty five to FY thirty, because we still have that elementary debt, and then after that, we have a little more briefing room. Okay, thank you. Uh, we can go back to that other one. Great. Okay, so let's continue, um, we are up to the solar. Who would like to discuss the solar aspect? Um, I, I have to admit that I'm one person who was somewhat confused about this, and I heard many different comments tonight and during the past week that, um, there is still some confusion out there, so, um, possibly Dawn or Steven or more.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, David is, David Wood is here as well, um, but just to start, just to clarify that the solar is not a part of the middle school building project. It is something that we are working on concurrently with the design. Um, so it's not included in the hun-, the cost of the solar is not included in a hundred million. Um, but I, I will, uh, Dave, if you're there, I'll turn it over to you for more details of how this is all gonna work.
Yeah, so we're working on, um, you know, the design right now. We have something back. We have the loading information for the building now, so we can start to do calculations, whi- which is what you're looking for in here. We currently haven't done because we just got the load letters late last week. Uh, but we can get more information over the next few weeks.
So David, you're saying that there will be a savings to the school in town once the solar panels are in? Or will that saving go to?
So there's, there's two pieces. In the design, there's a top array will be connected through the school. Um, and then the array that's gonna be, uh, proposed, a canopy array in the parking lots, that would be connected directly to the, uh, CMLP infrastructure, so there's two different pieces to it. Right, um, the savings to the school would, uh, be from the rooftop, um, primarily because it's going directly into the school, and that energy would most likely be used in the school, uh, the majority of the time.
Okay, that explains it. There's two different pieces. So the part in the rooftop would go to a savings in the electric bill for the, um, for the building. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and you said that you will be getting some initial calculations, um, in the next couple of weeks. Uh, so now my question is, is this utility savings part of line B, the cost efficiencies, or is this a different savings?
It's included in B.
I'll say that again?
I don't believe it's included in B.
Okay.
No, no, it's not.
Because we haven't even finished the calculations yet.
Excellent.
So, I'm just gonna say, and we'll, we'll have further conversations about this, but since this is not part of the building committee project, it is very important that the school committee have discussions about this.
Great, so the owner is the school committee for, um, this one. Wonderful.
So you're gonna put where the responsible party with the town manager?
Or, or what's, what's CMLP?
It's CMLP, so that would, I think that would include the light board. Um, and then the, the school committee has the, um, you know, property owner, sure.
Well, I, I think we need to have discussions about how this all gonna play out, whose responsibility things are in the future, et cetera, so. So we'll, we'll have an agenda future meeting.
And let's give that one a timeframe, because David said he's gonna have some initial calculations, so you think by January, um, we might have some idea, some estimate for this?
Yeah, for sure.
Excellent.
Hopefully sooner than that.
Right. Well, let's put the great, okay, excellent. Uh, is there any wild guess number that anybody wants to put in tonight, even if it's five dollars or something, or not?
I'm not comfortable putting a guess in.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, let's go on to grants for sustainability. So for sustainability grants, we did have sustainability director who has left, and we are in, um, interviewing for a new, uh.
Carrie, you have a couple of hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the, for the solar.
Okay, Kathy Kukalow.
Yes, I have a, I have a question. Um, are we not using solar energy on our schools? We have solar on Willard right now, that's it. Cause I think of Concord as being very, um, proactive in the solar, so.
Bigger discussion, Kathy. We're happy to have it with you. It's a bigger discussion. We're happy to have it with you.
Okay, it, the, yeah, this is probably not the place for it, but.
Just a point of reference, though, we do have over ten megawatts of solar in town, so we are moving forward solar.
Great, thanks.
I, if I could just offer one clarifying point, too, Dave, you can jump in if I have this incorrect, but uh, it's important to remember that because we have so much solar, uh, larger scale projects like you'd have in a school building, I think, require some element of storage, which adds significantly to the cost of the, of the solar, um, project. In, in this project itself would include so, stored, onsite storage as well.
Okay, anybody else, um, have their hand up on this item?
I do, I do. Terry, I do.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah.
Oh, look at that. You have a yellow background.
I do, I do, I have, yes, it's so soothing, yes. Um, I, did I understand Stephen correctly that any solar panels we've put on there is not included in the hundred million dollar budget right now?
That's correct.
Okay, then if what we're doing here is we're trying to figure out how to shave off money on the property taxes of, of a thousand twenty four based on a million dollar school, I don't think we should be taking any savings to, against that thousand twenty four. You see what I'm saying? The hundred, what we're trying to, we're starting with the hundred million, and we're saying that gives us a one thousand twenty four dollar tax bill every year for twenty years. How can we reduce that? And yet we're taking reductions for things that aren't included in the hundred million. So we should just skip over that for now.
What's wrong with free money?
But it's, but it's not a savings. It's, it's, it's.
It, it could be if the reduction. It could be if the reductions exceeded the cost to put it up, right, Mary?
Right, right, but we don't know that yet, right? We don't know how much it's going to cost and we don't know how much it's going to save.
That's right. So right now, we have a blank. And we have-
And wouldn't a reduction in solar, I mean, in electrical costs be part of operating costs and not-
Yes.
Right. Right. The school committee and CMLP are going to explore this further. And it may be that there is no proper deduction for the, either is. So we need some more exploration and they should know in the next few months.
Thank you.
Jerry, you have your hand up.
Yes. Hi, I'm Jerry Frankel, 132 Jenny Dugan Road. I'm the chair of the Comprehensive Sustainability Interview Committee. I wanted to add just a little bit of color to a couple of comments. First, regarding town manager's comment about the energy storage. This is correct. As I understand the CMLP's plans, storage would be needed and likely and preferred, actually. But while this would add to the installation costs, there are revenue opportunities and avoided cost opportunities that are associated with batteries that would likely come into play. So I just want to make sure that that's understood along with the upfront costs. Secondly, regarding the potential of splitting the solar project into two pieces, one on the rooftop that feeds directly to CMS, the other, the canopy, which would feed directly to CMLP. The solar that would feed directly to the school would have an operating cost benefit of reducing the net electricity cost for the school. It would be an avoided cost. And it's too early to estimate that with any clarity. But I do want to point out that that is a significant advantage of putting that on the roof. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so that's a good segue anyway into sustainability. And Jerry, you might want to comment on this as well as Dawn or anyone from the middle school building committee or us, Stephen Crane, anybody who has some insight into, since we don't have Kate Hanley with us right now. I know she was working very hard on these grants and that there are grants that we can apply for. But does anybody have any idea based on conversations you had with her or any notes she left or anything else?
Terry, this is Linda Escobedo.
Linda?
I would just comment that while the town is probably committed to going after the grant money, the availability of that grant money is determined on various initiatives that the state and federal government put forward. And so, you know, I think it's very difficult to get specific on this one, but we certainly know we have a commitment to that as a town.
Right. Right, exactly. It's going to be hard. And Kate was with us. She might provide some more guidance. If I could just finish for one second and then what, the way I'm looking was if we didn't put in these sustainable improvements, the cost of the building might have been different, a little bit lower. We were putting in an investment. And so there should be hopefully some grants that ought, that then in reduction of greenhouse gas. And who was it that wanted to speak? Was it Dawn?
It's Kate Hodges.
Kate, okay, can't see.
Hi, I'm Kate Hodges, deputy town manager. I'm actually the department head for sustainability. So most of what Kate was doing, we were doing in partnership. So I can tell you that I spent some time today and earlier last week just catching up with Kate. And she had said to me that there were a number of conversations that she had at the middle school building committee level relative to potentials for grants. But the ones that she was honing in on were really through green communities and not things that were specific to any of the school departments. And so the town has participated in the green communities program for a number of years. And we are finishing out one of the grant terms now. We have to spend the money by the end of September, so we're finishing that up. And while we are able to apply for future grants, it has to be current infrastructure that we're going with. And it also has to show a saving from what we're starting with to what we're ending with. And so when you're talking about a new school, we don't have a baseline right now. I was able to make contact with the office at the state that deals with green communities and was talking about using data from two schools and then showing how there's a reduction in energy use going down to one school. And while the state had said that that was commendable and really something that we should pursue, that it likely, given the amount of money that Concord's already received from green communities, probably wouldn't be something that would be at the forefront for funding rounds, at least in the next two years. So unfortunately, there might be others and certainly will continue to look. And we have made an offer to a very qualified candidate and hope to be making an announcement in the upcoming days about that. But as of right now, that was the one tree that Kate was barking up and it looks like that that might not come to fruition.
Okay, not great news, but thank you for the clarity on that.
I apologize that it wasn't better.
Okay. So that does sound like we may have to put zero in here for now. And I guess the O U sustainability Director. Does anyone else wish to comment? Jerry?
Yes, I do. I want to elaborate on one thing that Kate touched on. I expect there will be operational cost savings in the new building compared to the old building for two reasons. First is the combination of two buildings, old buildings into one. The second is the energy efficiency of the building itself, which is a very high priority of the sustainability subcommittee of the middle school building committee. I don't know what those savings will be, but I expect they're material. And those would decrease the annual operating expense of the school. You might want to look at how to factor that into this kind of analysis.
Right, thank you, Jerry. And I think that that might be included in line B, which we already talked about, which came out to 548,000 per year in operational savings. But I guess I would ask Lori Hunter if that is included or not.
Yes, there's a placeholder in there for our best estimate, primarily because of the, it's actually less square footage that we'll be heating in one new school versus the two. So we were comfortable taking some. Hopefully that number can get refined over time.
Great, okay. So I guess, Terry, if you could court for the owner of this one, the new sustainability director, and then we can move on. Pivoting field, I think we've already discussed as one part of line C. It's one possible refinement of it. And we're up to the rental income from use of the new building, which I think Lori has graciously volunteered to be the owner or lead in that one. This is about what I would call user fees. Rental income is another way to put it. Lori, do you want to comment on this one?
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously something we're going to work on with the school committee. I don't expect you're going to have any significant savings enough to put into your formulas and watch the annual costs reduce. I just want to be sure we've done our due diligence to work through the formulas and models. The committee is also looking at user fees, et cetera. So we'll have more to bring back, but I don't think you've got numbers to put in there right now.
Right. Are there two different things? One is rental income and one is user fees? Or is it all sort of one thing?
I'm going to put that all in one bucket for right now.
That's what I think, too. Okay. Anyone else wish to comment on rental income or user fees?
This is Dean. I think that this one is, once again, we're back to this sort of subtle idea of, you know, the school is renting out, say, the gym or the auditorium for, you know, some other independent use. And they're collecting a fee. And the capacity of the schools to shovel that money over to Carrie so she can then apply it to debt service is lost on me. It's not the same as taking a, you know, a big chunk, like $548,000, and having the finance committee and the schools agree to a guideline reduction or something where that can be simple. This is not simple at all. They're collecting fees on an ad hoc basis as people rent. So it's, I think that this is, I wouldn't even consider this to be a viable way of really allocating a cost reduction.
Yep. So that's, I think, to be explored. That's a good point. Okay, naming rights. Who would like to, who has a comment about this? This was a out of the box idea that might get us something. Anybody wish to comment on this?
You know, yes, Terry, this is Dee. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Dee.
Okay, on this one, I thought this was a great idea that Chris had. And she used it as for naming rights on buildings and sports fields. But I think you could actually, instead of naming rights on a building, you might want to consider naming rights on a room. And it might be the music room. And so that could then actually go to directly, the cost of building the music room could be reduced, you could take that to reduce the total cost of the project if it were funded by a gift or a donation, is what I'm saying. So I think that there's opportunities in that regard. And I'm going to jump right down into the next one as well and with the CPC. And the fellow who mentioned about the rec, the use of recreation for the building, I think that you could apply to the CPC for funding the construction of the gym. Not the, you know, changing rooms and things, but the actual facility. You know, it might be the flooring or it might be whatever they were looking for. But I think that that would be appropriate because that would fall under recreation. He also mentioned debt service and I'm not even sure how that would figure in on any of this at all with the CPC. And that, those are my thoughts at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Peggy?
Yeah, I think the rental income, the naming rights, we definitely need to be attentive to those because I'm sure they will come up in town meeting and other venues. That being said, I think they should be zeroed out. I think rental income is, it's de minimis. And the naming rights, well, the only very limited naming rights we've had so far are sort of in memory or whatever. It's not like, you know, a very large gift for a naming right. But I think we need to keep them in. I just don't think we should put any numbers in there. Same thing with CPC. I'm, Dee, we've both been on that committee, I think. And I am not sure we can fund for recreation vertical construction as opposed to horizontal construction. So I just can't remember. We would need to look at that.
Right, it would have to be researched, but I think it's something well worthwhile researching.
I think all three of those will be asked at town meeting. I think we should maybe zero them out, but have a really good answer.
Right. So I'll call on you in a minute, Lois. So while I'm calling on Lois, I want everyone to think I'm looking for volunteer ownership to explore donations and naming rights.
So Terry, that would sit firmly, only with the school committee.
Totally agreed. We have very strong policies about that, which are very limiting right now because these are children in front of these names.
Right, thank you.
Terry, wait, Terry, Steven, just, I know the school committee has the jurisdiction on it, but for reference purposes, the select board also has a policy on this APP 43 that people should check out as a part of this, as we do research on this.
But I just want to be clear, the school committee would make these decisions, not any other body, not the select board.
I'm looking for who's going to take ownership of exploring it, answering questions at town meeting, deciding, you know, to report that, yes, it's feasible, no, it's not, that kind of thing. And the same with CPC. Who is going to take, who would volunteer to find out what can or cannot be done, how feasible it is? Do we have anybody here who wants to volunteer on the CPC end?
Sure, I will. This is Dee.
Hey, I was going to call on you, Dee, but-
I thought you might. I thought you might, too.
You have a lot of experience with CPC.
I was just keeping my head down.
Okay, Lois, we have a comment.
Yeah, question, does the school committee or the town have a nonprofit vehicle where people who make gifts or donations can get their tax write-off, so whatever they're looking for?
Cynthia, do you have like a friends of or a parent group?
There's the Concord Ed Fund.
Okay.
What's it called?
Yeah, well, hey, sorry, Steven, again, we just went through this. I don't care if you wanted to weigh in on this because certain donations directly to the town, and I assume supplies of school district, are tax deductible.
Okay, so you do have a vehicle for that, then?
Yes, Cynthia just said Concord Educate.
I think your property taxes are tax deductible.
Yeah, well-
Only up to-
If somebody gives a big gift, sometimes that's an incentive. That's all. Thank you.
I know. I apologize for my-
That's okay. We need some lividity. Okay. All right, we're making good progress. We have four left. So the next one is ARPA funds. And ARPA is the American Recovery Something Act that has to do with after COVID for economic development and DPI and all kinds of issues that have come up. And related to this is the next one, other federal infrastructure grants. Actually, we could take these all together, CDBG grants. Let's take these three items together. So we need a way to explore what kind of grants we might be able to go after that middle school might be eligible for, if any.
So we will, this is Stephen Crane, again, that we will look into. We will look into the American Recovery Plan Act. I have not seen anything in the guidance that has come out that would say a project like this would be eligible because it's not, it's not about equity or economic recovery that I can see. But we will look into that question to see if there's a part of our ARPA funding that we could potentially look at in terms of future-
Let me just stop you there. So thank you for doing that. And let me just mention, there's two, at least two types of ARPA. There's the town ARPA funds, but there's also school ARPA funds. So if you could look into that as well with or without superintendent. However, you know, to make sure that, you know, all different kinds of ARPA funds are included in this research, that would be great.
We'll work with, Jared and I will work with Stephen and Kerry.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Stephen. I interrupted on, on the other two things.
Yeah, on the, I think it's a three and a half trillion dollar stimulus bill. I don't know if Matt, that's what you were referring to. I, I think it's, that would be premature to try and guess what funding would come out and what the eligibility would be. In terms of CDBG and other federal funds, again, I think we can look at, um, what options there are for projects like this. Understanding, you know, based on my experience, I think friction order money can be very limited. Um, but we can certainly pursue, uh, anything that we may be eligible for that this, that the project will be a fit for.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I neglected to say timeframe. On these items, Stephen, what, what would your approximate timeframe be, do you think?
Uh, I mean, give us a few weeks to look at it.
Sure, just, um.
I mean, I mean, ARP is easy. I mean, ARP we can look at, you know, this week. Um, other, others will take some, some research.
Okay, good. So by the end of 2021, you should know my deal needs, that's great. Okay, and then we're up to operational savings from other budget cost centers. So I think that I heard a few people say, we need to tighten our belt, we need to cut other operating and capital projects. Uh, who would like to comment on this one?
So Terry, one idea would be to use the new process that, uh, we're going to be implementing this fall with respect to capital planning. And, um, part of that discussion between the select board and the school committee, and eventually the finance committee, will include a projection of debt load. And so it could be a discussion there to the extent it, it impacts capital spending. You know, are there things that we need to time differently? Um, or perhaps in terms of the towns, uh, what is it, 3% to 6% that we put aside in the budget for, um, capital projects that we look at a way to cut some of that down or defer it? So that would be one, one place where it could be taken up.
Yeah, that's a good idea because enough 3% to 6%, I mean, the middle school is definitely a capital project. So it's not like we're deferring it for operations or anything. We're just moving it from, um, one capital project to another.
Right.
That makes a lot of sense. So Chris, are you saying that the finance committee is going to be taking a look at this anyway? Can, can we put you down in this box?
Well, we're all, yeah, we're always looking at it. So we, we, we can, we certainly can come up with some recommendations for other, um, areas of savings. Yep, we can do that.
Okay, so that would probably be by January then?
Yep.
Okay, and I, thank you. And I neglected to do the rental income and the naming rights and the CPC, uh, to get a timeframe on those. Laurie, Cynthia, Dee, you guys have a?
So it's sort of a complicated question because we can't give you an estimate. Let's just say we go through our policies, have a discussion. I can't say, you know, the revenue from naming rights will be.
Right.
I, I don't know.
Right.
And then the school committee would have to accept the name, you know, it's just, this isn't.
Right.
So.
Yeah, let's leave that one open-ended.
Yeah, thank you.
The rental income and user fees. Any particular timeframe on that one?
We had slated to work with the school committee on that in October, so I think over the next couple of months. Again, it's so nominal.
Right. Well, I mean, we can give you a range, right? We could say, you know, we could give you a range.
Okay, perfect.
I would, I would think.
I mean, everything that we know before January special town meeting is, is really great. So if we think we're going to know it by then, terrific, we'll put that in. And the same for Dee Ortner, do you think the CPC?
This is, this is somewhat different. What I have to do, I, I will, um, have a couple of meetings and, um, talk, talk just about in generalities about the appropriateness of this. First, we have to make sure that it's appropriate, um, and that it could be brought to the CPC. But the funding for it, I, I'd have to explore that a little bit more. I cannot give you any numbers whatsoever. I know that the library came in, um, you know, they wanted money, they wanted a half million dollars. We gave them a half million dollars one year, I, you know, and then the schools came in for the fields and that was over three years and that was a million something.
Right.
That was a little bit before me, but, um, so I'll, I'll just do a little research for it. And, and Terry, I'll get back to you personally on it. How's that?
So do you think you'd have some, you would have some information by the January special town meeting? Like, yes, we can do it, or no, we can't, you know, we'll have some information, right?
That is the type of information I would have. The dollar amount, it's not something that I could really even forecast.
Correct.
Yes, I'll have information for you.
Okay, so I think we're making a lot of progress. There are still many unknowns. And we have many volunteers who have signed up here. Thanks to all of you. This is a community-wide project and many, many volunteers are on this list, working hard. Thank you so much to all of you. So, um, I guess we, um, would, does anyone have some other comments of any sort that we have neglected to discuss in this topic tonight? Is there anyone?
Let me, let me ask, let me make one comment on this. All of these, I think we have two different, um, concerns. One is the number that we go to the special town meeting with in January, a time at which we will still not know what the project is going to cost. And all of the savings that we've been talking here, which are worthwhile, are probably well within the margin of error of the actual cost of the construction project. So they're worth doing, but they're something that we can talk about probably in the time that goes between the special town meeting and the time that we actually start building the project. And that's the time we have to pursue those. I don't think that there are very, I think there are very few of these that we can present to the voters at the town meeting as items that are, that are going to affect the final number that we have to vote for the financing. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the way I see it. And I think that we really, I assume that the $100 million in the real world is not the maximum, is not the, is not the maximum number, it's the minimum number of the cost. And I will not be surprised if when we get to getting the bids, um, and the final estimates and we're ready to start construction, we're going to be talking about a number that's significantly more than $100 million.
Well, that may be, and if so, we will certainly have to have conversations about that. And, um, actually, Henry, I'm glad that you are speaking because I see here that we have forgotten to list your idea about the residential exemption. Is this an idea that, um, used, oh, it's up at the top there. There it is. I neglected to discuss, okay.
I, I would say it's the old, although it has many, many problems and many issues attached to it, I think it is the only, it's the only, um, concept that in fact will have any real significant, or could have any real significant on the, on the tax impact of this project.
That could be. I think, um, the question is whether it's feasible and whether it would work.
Well, that's, I, it, it, on the surface, it's certainly attractive and it's not, definitely not a new idea. There are, there are many, there are, well, a few details that need to be worked out and more research is needed. And, um, Cynthia pointed out to me that there was a very comprehensive study of this, uh, done in Lexington. And that's worth looking at. But the point is that I don't, I think that we're going to have trouble getting through the approval process, a project that is going to increase the, um, the, um, the ownership costs of the average homeowner in this town by 100 bucks a month. And it, without the, without the, um, residential exemption, that's what we're looking about, looking at. It may not be, it may be 800, it may be 1,000, it may be 1,200, depending on what the actual cost is and how much we can save on it. But we're talking about in the order of magnitude of, uh, something that will increase the average tax bill of, uh, about $1,000 a year or about 100 bucks a month, which is a big expense for many people. And again, we talk about affordable housing. If you make the housing that we have difficult to afford and then take the money and go and build new housing that's affordable, it seems like a useless and circular process.
Right. So, Henry, I think that if you're correct, many people will agree with you. Think however the select, uh, presentation that this might not be doable and that it may not work and it may backfire on the very people that we're trying to help. I don't want to get into the detail with you too. But the question really is, is this feasible? Would it work? And I think everybody has the same goal. The question is, you know, really, how practical is this? So I'm wondering if you could take a look at that Lexington report. Uh, Susan, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think this deserves a, a bit of a broader discussion and it was January that we, um, decided that we had a presentation and the board, um, decided that this was not going to work. And I don't want to get into all the reasons, but, but there, because it's beyond the scope of this. But I think, uh, that we should kind of close this discussion for now and we can bring it up at a select board meeting when we have time to go into the, um, more of the details, which, which illustrate the reasons that we decided it wasn't a good idea for Concord.
Okay, uh, Todd Benjamin?
Uh, yes, hello. Uh, I, as I was listening to some of the comments, I was reminded of, of one idea that I failed to mention previously and I just wanted to, um, to put it out there. Uh, one idea in the spirit of brainstorming is, um, is something that's been mentioned previously is pilots, uh, payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, not for all nonprofits. What I'm referring to are solely the six, um, nonprofits in town that are essentially businesses, uh, Emerson Hospital, the, um, the five private, um, schools, and then Harvard University. In total, those six entities, if they were to pay their full taxes, would, would pay about $3.2 million a year, uh, and that's revenue that the town does not get. Uh, so that is something that could be, I, I mean, I don't think anybody's under any misgivings that we would ever get the entire tax amounts. But even if we got half of that or a quarter of that, that would certainly, that would certainly help.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peggy?
All right, I'm sorry, this is more by way of response to Todd. Help you have read the, um, pilot studies that the Board of Selectmen has sponsored over the last 15 years.
Uh, I, I have, um, we looked at this and as part of the Affordable Housing Funding Committee. And, um, the studies that were done previously looked at, uh, taxing all nonprofits, um, in town. Whereas what we looked at, uh, as part of the Affordable Housing Funding Committee was taxing or, or having a pilot for solely those six entities. So this would not apply to churches, it would not apply to small nonprofits like Open Table. Would apply to these organizations who have endowments that run into the tens of millions of dollars. When we ran our computations, the cost of taxation or of the pilot program for these entities would represent less than 1% of their endowment.
Like the, um, like the, um, uh, the, uh, residential exemption, these are issues that involve policy matters that go way beyond the financing. I mean, for instance, with pilots, the reason that they are tax exempt is that they are institutions that we want to encourage to locate and do business in this town. And they are an important part of our culture. And the same thing goes with the issue of the residential exemption. It's, the assessors may have a certain point of view, I think that was expressed back in January with regard to the economic concerns. But it's also a matter of social and housing policy. And those policy issues are ones that I think are ones that are really in the province of the select board and the town meeting, rather than on the administrative departments that have to implement them.
Okay, all right.
Terry, it's Chris. I have one, just one question. So this issue, this is Chris Reynolds. The, um, the financing assumptions, so the, the way that we pay off the debt, those three options that are up above. I know we, Carrie mentioned, we have our financial advisors on this call. I'm just curious whether they have any, um, advice or the implications of us moving from the 20-year, um, whatever formula we use, you know, flat, flat debt, whatever it is that we're currently using, to one of these proposals. Is there any implications for us as a borrower?
Uh, good question. So you're saying is there, is, do they have advice on 20 years versus 20 years versus 30?
And, and Chris, by implications, you mean on, on the credit rating?
Credit rating, ability to borrow, cost of financing.
Okay, Peter Frazier, are you still with us?
I, I sure am, and good evening. The, uh, it's a great question and not to dodge, but, um, there's sort of no right or wrong answer. It, it's, it's true. Uh, the town of Concord has enjoyed the benefits of very rapidly amortizing its debt historically. You know, you guys borrow, uh, typically, uh, for shorter than the maximum term allowable for, for projects. And, uh, you know, as evidenced by, if you look at your outstanding tax-supported debt, it amortizes very rapidly, which opens up capacity in future years to be able to layer on new debt without necessarily burden, burdening taxpayers. Because, you know, if, if a million or $2 million is opening up every year, you can layer stuff on and, and the taxpayer really doesn't feel it as an increase in, in terms of the debt service appropriation. So with respect to the, uh, arguments for, uh, lengthening debt, you know, with these projects like a school that's going to have a very long useful life, you know, by definition, uh, 50 years or so, um, folks and very low interest rates now, most communities stretch it out, stretch out the term to its maximum to, to, uh, provide relief for today's taxpayers with the idea that, well, you know, folks moving into town 10, 15, 20 years from now that are going to enjoy this asset, uh, should pay their share for it. Um, the, the counter argument obviously is the sooner you amortize this project, the sooner you'll be able to afford the next inevitable project. And so, uh, again, it's not, it's not one's right and one's wrong. It, it really is in the context of what does your existing roll-off look like? What other projects are coming down the pike and how are they're going to get layered in, into the, uh, uh, scheme? As well as, you know, the interest rates have a big, uh, part of this. If, if you can borrow at interest rates that are almost zero, you know, if, if right now the, the town could borrow money, uh, it, for 20 years at maybe 1.5%, maybe even less. Stretching it out, there isn't a big, uh, penalty in terms of the interest. there isn't a big penalty in terms of the interest costs associated with it. So in that case, as opposed to if interest rates were very high, you'd want to amortize the debt more quickly to get out from under those big interest payments. So again, I, from my perspective, most communities don't have the resources of Concord. So it is sort of a, it's kind of a no brainer. You stretch it out to your max, you make it affordable today in order to, for people to vote for it. But you guys are in a fortunate position because you have more wherewithal than most. So, you know, from my, again, I'm sorry to ramble, but from my standpoint, I think that the exercise is to show what the, the different structures look like and what the delta is between them. And somebody had, I think, brought up rightly that you can't just compare a 20-year schedule in terms of what the payment is versus a 30-year schedule, because the 30-year, you're going to be paying for 10 years longer than that, that 20 years. So you really have to not only look at what the annual difference in terms of the debt service, but the total debt service difference over the life of, of each scenario.
Thank you, Peter. That's a wonderful, wonderful segue to where I wanted to go anyway, which is Carrie has put these three scenarios together for us now, which are the same, except for whether we borrow for 20 years, 25 or 30 years. And if we go down to the bottom, we come up with an estimated savings of somewhere between $200 and $354 for the median house. So we are definitely moving in the right direction. I think we'll be a lot more successful with the vote if it's, you know, coming down from the 1,000 for the median house. And I think that these scenarios are a lot realistic, especially because we have a lot of blanks in here and we might be able to add some more numbers as we go along. So a lot of progress tonight.
Terry, it's Don Barrio. Hi, I was kind of staying quiet because I didn't know if this would come up. And in the responding to John Hinckley, I think, said, what have other towns done? We can't be the only ones, you know, trying to do this. I just wanted to share one experience I had. I think I've mentioned this before, but for those who haven't heard, one of my projects set up a, they basically, under MGL Chapter 63D, established an elderly and disabled taxation relief fund. So those who had the ability to contribute to that, it basically allowed them to offset some of the taxation on those community members. So something to think about or look into. Maybe it's not the right fit, but just wanted to share something that one of my projects did. They basically made it a, a special town meeting warrant and voted on it at the same time as the project. So just wanted to share that.
Good idea. And you reminded me, we did not put down an item for exploring what have other towns done? That probably should be on the list here somewhere as another item that we should report out on. What have other, like maybe letter N or something, what have other towns done? Are there any other comments? It's getting to be a little bit past nine o'clock and we've been at this a while. I think we're definitely making some good progress and we'll have to continue speaking about it. Does anyone have some final comments that they'd like to make? Okay, well, there's.
Terry, I, I just wanted to say thank you to you for spearheading this idea of focus group meetings throughout the year that we'll be having on various topics. I think it was a really productive session. Thanks.
Well, thanks to everyone. And when I look, look at all the people, it looks like almost everybody has participated, which is really excellent. We had 55 people at one point. And that's what it's going to take to get the school built. We need a lot of community effort. So thanks so much to everyone who participated and who's volunteering to lead one of the charges. Connection is now unstable, maybe it's time to adjourn the meeting. Good timing. So we need to adjourn all of these different groups.
Before they run away.
The select board could go first. We have a motion to adjourn the select board meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Zachary.
Okay, roll call. Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye, for the first time tonight.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Thank you. Our school committee?
I entertain a motion to adjourn the Concord School Committee.
Second. Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
Miranda, aye.
Rainya, and I think I heard Alexa. We are adjourned.
Middle School Building Committee.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don move.
Thank you, Court. Any seconds?
Second and a second.
Thanks, I heard Matt. Stephen Crane?
Yes, sorry coming up in there.
That's okay, Stephen, thanks. Jared still with us? I'm just going to call everyone. Jared Stanton. Matt Johnson.
Aye.
Thanks, Matt. Laurie Hunter.
Aye.
Justin Cameron. John Harris.
Aye.
Thanks, John. Russ Hughes.
Aye.
Thanks, Russ. Peter Frashalis. Alexa Anderson.
Aye.
Thanks, Alexa. Court Booth.
Aye.
Thank you. Heather Bout. Chris Popoff. Charlie Parker. I don't think Matt Root was with us and I don't know if Pat was able to join us. Pat, you here? Nope, okay, and I. Thank you.
Okay, and the finance committee.
Yeah, I mean, fair as Terry, it wasn't technically a meeting. So we do have a quorum, but we didn't have it posted as a meeting. So I don't know whether we have to adjourn or not formally. I don't think we do, but I'm happy, I'm happy to do a roll call if we need to. Anybody know?
Might as well.
Okay.
If it wasn't posted, let's not.
It was, it was not posted. It was not.
I don't think there's any need to adjourn.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right, everybody have a great evening now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.